This is David Limble. So for those of you on the phone, I'm repeating myself if you've been there for a little bit, but just so you're aware, it appears that we have Mr. Nicewonger, Mr. DeCarlo, Mr. Ramsey, and Dr. Latimer on the phone. Dr. Alsop and Mr. Powell are here in the room along with Dr. King and Dr. Nolan in terms of the meeting. Also here in the room with us are members of the university community, the public and the media. We are also live streaming this, and of course, we always record these sessions for the archive as well, so just be aware of that. And we do have a quorum, Mr. Chairman, so we can get started at your pleasure.
All right. Well, I think that will satisfy the need for roll call, you just going through those that you know are in. Let's go ahead then and start with item number three on our agenda, which will be...
One of the things I need to do first under roll call is special information related to this being an electronic meeting, if you can bear with me, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Yes, so as today is not a regularly scheduled meeting, but a special call meeting of board, we have several trustees who are participating by electronic means. With some of the trustees participating remotely, there are differences in procedure to follow as we take roll and vote in accordance with Tennessee Code 844-108, Section 3. I have two questions to ask of those that are participating remotely. The first is if you're able to hear us and can participate in this meeting, and if there's anyone with you at your location. So, Mr. Nicewonger, can you hear, and is anyone present with you?
I can hear, there is no one with me.
Okay. Dr. Latimer, same questions.
I can hear, and there's no one with me.
Okay, Mr. DeCarlo.
I can hear, and there's no one with me.
Okay. And Mr. Ramsey. It may be that we're having a technical issue. Governor Ramsey, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, sir, and is anyone with you?
No, I can hear you well, and there's no one with me.
Okay, great. Anybody else on the phone that I missed? Okay? And with the presence of those in the room today with Dr. Alsop and Mr. Powell, Mr. Chairman, I don't detect a physical quorum present, however, that quorum does exist by inclusion of those members participating by electronic means. In accordance with Tennessee Code 844-108, Section B2, I would offer up to the board the following circumstances which necessitate the reason for holding this meeting. It is necessary for the Board of Trustees to meet in order to approve the proposed tuition and fee university budgets for the upcoming year, and the prompt necessity of today's board meeting did not provide adequate time for trustees to make their necessary travel arrangements to be physically present for a quorum. For those reasons, I would contend that participation by a quorum of the board members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Mr. Chairman, I need a motion followed by a roll call vote to make sure that we have a necessity for determining determination that we're holding this meeting electronically. So if I can have a motion, please, in a second, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
So move.
There's a motion by Mr. Powell here.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Alsop. So I'll call the roll. If you can affirm, an affirmative vote will be to have this meeting. A vote in the negative would be not to have this meeting. So, Dr. Alsop.
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo.
Yes.
Dr. Latimer.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Ramsey.
Yes.
Mr. Nicewonger.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Have I missed anybody? Has someone else come on the phone? Okay, hearing not, then, Mr. Chairman, that concludes what I need to do. Thank you for your patience, and I will allow you to move forward with your agenda.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, we'll cover item three on the agenda, tuition and mandatory fees. Dr. Nolan, would you please begin?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for taking the time to participate in this important meeting today. I was going to joke that I can also hear, but I'm not in the room alone, there are a number of individuals here today. But I'd like to set the stage for each of the agenda items with a few comments. First, want to discuss the sequence of today's meeting and outline why this sequence entails the need for a called meeting rather than the action that we would typically have taken in April. As the board and members of the university community will remember, last year, we brought action on tuition fees, budgets, as well as tenure promotion to the board at the April meeting, thereby affording the opportunity for students and families to have a sense of their tuition fees and scholarship packages prior to returning home for the start of the summer. This year, however, was atypical from a budget perspective because of the inauguration of Governor Lee and the fact that the General Assembly began their budget work late. It is our intent next April to take action on these meetings back at the original meeting schedule, but because of some issues in Nashville that has impacted our calendar, hence the need for the meeting today. The budget that came forward from Governor Lee was an outstanding budget for this university. We were number two in the state in terms of outcome funding, and as a result of distinct investment in post-secondary education, we're in a position today to do some things both on the salary side as well as on the tuition and fee side that allow us to make investments in our people, but to ensure that we balance access and affordability. The fee increase the staff will bring to you today is 2.3%. That's among the lowest fee increases in modern history, and it continues a string of very low increases in tuition and fees. The fee increase comes in below the THEC cap of 2.5%. So we have taken judicious steps from a staff perspective to ensure efficiency to protect the goal of access. The bulk of the resources that will be generated by the fee increase will be invested in our people. The governor's budget calls for a 2% across-the-board salary enhancement, and the bulk of the resources generated from fees will go to cover the university's portion of that salary enhancement. That salary enhancement will be the seventh time in eight years that we've been able to make investments in faculty and staff salaries. You have to go back decades to find a string of seven consecutive years of salary enhancements, and seven out of eight years, we've enhanced the faculty and staff salaries for the individuals who comprise the ETSU family. As we look at where we are in terms of our institutional budget, this budget as presented is a balanced budget. It allows the opportunity to make deepened investments in reserves. It ensures that we protect the scholarship investments that we've made in our students, their investments in our faculty and our staff, and there are also investments in facilities that come as a result of the things that have come forward from Governor Lee's budget. I also would like to note that we have, at the last board meeting, put in place fees at the college level. As you will recall, a couple of years ago, we changed the budget process on this campus, providing greater budget ownership and oversight at the college level. Those college-level issues provide the opportunity, as determined by market, for deans of the respective colleges to make additional investments in their faculty and staff, be they full-time or part-time. Last year, for example, in our College of Clinical and Rehabilitation Health Sciences, as well as in the College of Business, there were additional salary enhancements provided for faculty and staff in those units. I anticipate that those pilots will move forward across other colleges at the institution, thereby providing opportunity for, in many areas, adjunct salary enhancements to be made at market rates, as determined by market, at a college level rather than a blunt across-the-board increase that has been called for. So we're going to be tactical by design, providing latitude and governance to our deans as designed within the budget model. So I wanted to provide that as a little bit of context. A lot of work has gone into this, and I will turn to Dr. BJ King for the presentation of the tuition and mandatory fees. Mr. Chair, I would recommend that at the inclusion of Dr. King's presentation, we take action in a roll call vote on that item. Dr. King will then walk through the proposed budget, pause to take action on that item, and then Mr. Jeremy Ross will present the proposed capital projects that will go forward to THEC for their consideration in the 2020 budget cycle. So these are not capital projects that are going to be funded this year, these are capital projects that we want to put before the governor and the General Assembly for next year. So that's kind of the layout of the meeting, and we'll now turn to Dr. King to present the first item, which is an overview of tuition and mandatory fees.
Good afternoon. I'm going to let him pull up a slide deck for me, and we'll get started on that. As many of you would recall, the legislation that went in last year for tuition and fees said that we needed to provide a board criteria for consideration when we're looking at an increase in tuition and fees, and that we would also allow for a public comment period. You had those materials provided to you where we detailed the steps that we went through to consider what's on the slide before you, the criteria for consideration, and you also were provided with both a summary by theme and the details of the public comments that were made on the ETSU website. So all that information was provided to you. Just a brief overview, the state level of support, which was very healthy for the university and for higher education in general across the state of Tennessee, was, it was good, but it gave us a $3.4 million increase on the main campus, but that left a $2.6 million gap that would have to be filled with tuition and fees. In order to do that, we would have had to raise tuition and fees $2.6 million, which we are, which would have to be by a 2.6% tuition increase, which is not what we did. We're going with a 2.3% overall tuition and fee increase, and we'll work through efficiencies to make up that gap in keeping up with inflation. The total cost of attendance is another factor that we look at, and I've provided you a slide and the details in your handouts which show ETSU compared with the other LGIs and the UT system, all the public universities in the state of Tennessee. And you will see that we are still within the last year, within the region of the other universities in the state of Tennessee, so we've not been unreasonably high at any time. The third item was efforts to mitigate the cost of attendance for students, and we are looking at efficiencies. The university has made investments in systems in order to review both academic efficiencies and administrative efficiencies on campus, and we're, we have worked on that process with some of the colleges on campus and continue to work on those processes with both academic and administrative units. The fourth element was to be within the binding limit set by the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. They set the binding limit at the top level was 2.5%. We're talking about an increase of 2.3%, which is below our inflation rate. So we have stayed within the binding limit as approved by THEC at their May meeting. And then the final item for consideration is our, is actually four parts to it, that we're continuing to work on enrollment goals, which should help keep the tuition rates down. So we are working to be competitive within our marketplace. We're working on development, developing enrollment management strategies. We're trying to price our out-of-state tuition correctly to encourage out-of-state students to come to the university, thus increasing our enrollment. We also, as you approved at the April meeting, provided a 2% across-the-board salary increase. Of that, almost $1 million of tuition increase goes to help fund that $2.4 million, $2.5 million increase in salaries and benefits, which equates to a 2% across-the-board salary increase. We're also opening some new facilities on campus or have opened. We assumed the Millennium Center in this current year that we're in, and we will be reopening the Culp Center and opening the Fine Art Center in the spring next year, and both of those mandate that we have some facilities increases. So those were part of our budget process this year, and will continue to be part of our budget process next year. I have a slide up now that looks at the mandatory fees that we're requesting. Those are the SGA fee, that is part one of a two-year request, the student activity fee, that's a $2 request, the technology access fee, that this is your three of a five-year request for that unit, and then the parking student access fee, which we're proposing to increase. And to let you know, we're also increasing the faculty and staff parking purchase as well, so both of those will go up the same annual dollar value, which is $20 a year. If we look at this next slide, we've got where we lie. The 2.3% increase equates to $214. 150 of that is in tuition or maintenance fees, and then $64 is in the mandatory fees. And as I said, the THEC cap was set at 2.5%, so we are under the THEC cap limit. On the next slide, I'm, oh, sorry, I thought I had that in there maybe. I wanted to let you know, as part of this fee proposal, we're not increasing the out-of-state tuition. What we found in our review of tuition and fees was that we were, we were too high in our out-of-state, so we're keeping it the same rate it is for 1819, and we're going to be capping the undergraduate fees at 15 credit hours and the graduate out-of-state fees at nine credit hours. The total funding provided, you'll see on page five of your agenda, we're providing additional revenue of about $2 million through this fee increase, through the maintenance fee increase, and of that, we're allowing for our salary increase, for a GA salary increase, and this is the third year in a five-year series of providing enhancements to our GA salaries. We're also creating a faculty tenure and promotion pool, which we did this current year as well, and then we've got a little under $600,000 for inflationary costs for facilities and other operations. So that's what the increases will be used for.
All right.
As it relates to the fee increase, Mr. Chair, are there questions that you or board members have of staff as it pertains to the proposal around tuition and fees?
I guess not. So, no, I have a motion for the adoption as presented of tuition and fees.
Mr. Chairman, David, we don't need a motion from the trustees, there's action coming from the...
Okay. Okay, then you want a roll call vote for those in favor?
I can call the roll, sir. If you'll reply by yes or no, voting for the proposal as presented from the committee. Dr. Alsop?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Dr. Latimer?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicewonger?
Yes.
Okay, anybody that I missed that came on the line late? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it passes.
Thank you. BJ, you want to take up the proposed budget now?
Yes, sir, I would love to.
Okay.
Okay, I wanted to show you on this slide exactly what the university is getting from the governor's budget. The main campus got about a $3.4 million influx, the College of Medicine about $1 million, and Family Medicine a little over a quarter of $1 million. As you are aware, our College of Pharmacy does not receive a state appropriation. In total, we're at about $4.7 million increase in state appropriation, and I've put the comparative for the prior year underneath that total line, so you can see this compares with about a $5.6 million increase in the prior year. The next slide shows you that our, we had requests from THEC for capital maintenance items of $11.8 million. Of that, in the governor's amended budget, we were funded for $5.65 million, and those capital projects are noted in the board materials. The capital projects, I'm just going to give you for information, all the public universities in the state were funded at about the same percentage level. So you'll see that the request was for $11.8 million. Other schools had other various requests, and they were all funded at about this 50% rate level, so it was equitable across all institutions. We also requested through THEC, our Humanities Building, which was not funded in the current year budget, but we're very hopeful will be item number two in the next capital project go-round. So we feel like we're positioned very well with the possibility of getting that funding in the next budget cycle with the governor. The governor's budget provided for a 2% salary pool for medicine and family medicine, but not anything for any of the LGI units. They said they wrapped our salary increases in our operating money, so we did get operating money, but none specified for salary. This board approved at the May, at the, sorry, the April meeting, a 2% across-the-board pay adjustment with a floor of $500. So that, the budget is based on that salary improvement that was approved by this board. Our enrollment projections that are in the budget this year, or the coming year, are for our camp, main campus enrollment to be down by 100 students. So last fall, we had an enrollment of 14,574, and we're budgeting for 14,474. This enrollment projection is within the current numbers that we're seeing, and we are anticipating a possible decline of 100 students. This is the same way that we budgeted in the prior year. We budgeted down 100 students, and then we ended up coming in with pretty much flat enrollment in the fall. So we'll be hopeful that we still come in flat for the fall. If you look at our budget, it's within, it's within available resources and balance. It's one of the lowest tuition increases over the last 20 years. We've funded faculty and salary pay increases, and our unrestricted state funding is up about $4.7 million for the three units that receive a state appropriation. So we have a lot to be very grateful for in the budget that's being presented. We're actually presenting two budgets today. We have to present both a estimated budget and then our July budget. The way the state of Tennessee budget process works is we start the year with a July budget. In October, we do a revised budget, and then in the spring, we do an estimated budget to close the year out. So this, this meeting, you're getting two budgets in front of you. We're going to go over some of the items impacting the proposed July budget first. So the items for the main campus is that we have an appropriation increase, a maintenance fee increase, required scholarship increases, and a projected enrollment decline. We've set up salary pools with a 2% increase, the GA base increase, faculty and promotion tenure pool, and facilities and operational inflation. If we look at what our investments are, you will see our primary investments are in instruction with $1.8 million and also in scholarships with $1.1 million. And I know you're probably going to get mathy on me, because I know several of you are, and you're going to say, well, that total increase in expenditures outpaced the revenues, but a portion of that is because we received additional funding that is in and out, so it's for our other post-employment benefits and our insurance benefits. And so that's why this number is larger than the 3.4 that we discussed earlier. So if we look at our revenues, our tuition and fees, we have booked those up by $2 million in this budget proposal. Our state appropriation is up $5 million or so because of the increase in appropriation, OPEB, and insurance costs. And the other large changes in auxiliaries, we're looking at revenue being up $1 million with fee increases in housing and food service, which were both approved at the April meeting. So that gets us to a total revenue budget of $272 million for the main campus. Now, this slide actually does a comparison, getting you from our original budget at the start of the year through our October revision, our end-of-the-year estimated, and then our proposed 1920 budget. And we've mentioned this to the committee and probably the board, there's a little bit of a roller coaster between the original and the October, where we bring back in our carry-forward fees, and then that number goes back down when we get to a proposed budget for the next year, because the carry-forward fees come back out. And I was asked by the committee to figure out better words to say this, and I figured it out, so I hope Mr. Powell will be happy with me. So what happens between the original and October is we bring those carry-forward funds into the budget. They're not part of current year revenue, they're prior year revenues, and so we don't present the original July budget with prior year revenues included. So basically, when we get to October, we're adding in expenditure dollars that came from prior year revenue that was sitting in our fund balance on the balance sheet. So all of you business people are following that, which is, and I found the words, so found the words to be able to explain that. And then we have to take them back off again, because in the July budget, the state only allows us to show the current year revenue and what it's going to fund. So that should explain that little roller coaster that we have going up and down between July, October, and July.
Okay.
So this shows you the investments that we're making. You'll see that our investments are, sorry, our investments are largely in instruction, and then also in student services. We're at 41% of our expenditures are in instruction and 10% in student services, and then we have 13% in scholarships projected for next year. And if we look at it by natural classification, you'll see that salaries and benefits account for the vast majority of our expenditures. So upwards of, over 60% of our expenditures are in salaries and benefits on the main So that's the main campus proposal, and as you see, it is balanced and we're within budget, and I think I did a better job of explaining October to estimated to July. The next...
I think you did too.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So the next item is the College of Medicine, and they have, I always like to show the support that they get from the Medical Education Assistance Corporation. They receive about $44 million in support through the year, and this is not on our books. Our actual budget for the College of Medicine will be the 64, 65 million that you see on the slide. But what we, but what we do is MEAC pays for a number of things on our behalf, and that number amounts to $44 million. So it's substantial, and we're very grateful that we have that relationship with MEAC and the funding that they supply, our college, the support they supply. The revenue budget is going to go up about $3 million for medicine, and as you can see, we're again making investments in instruction. That's the primary growth area for the College of Medicine. So instruction's the biggest piece of the pie for College of Medicine, and again, professional salaries, other salaries and employee benefits are accounting for about 70% of their expenditures. The Family Medicine budget has appropriations of almost $8 million. The family medicine budget has appropriations of almost $8 million and they have clinical revenue of about $5 million. Resident participation this year of about $3.7 million to make up their total of $17 million in revenue. Again, we'll look at how that's distributed. Largest increase is, is in instruction as it should be. The expenditures in instruction, in salaries and benefits. I think I probably saying the same thing over and over, over again, but that is the way higher education works. Gatton College of Pharmacy does not receive anything in state appropriation. They're anticipating 11.5 million in fees. They have other sources income of 15,000. Someone did ask a question about this and that 15,000 is just miscellaneous income from things like, um, career fairs that they participate in with some of the pharmacies. I, I guess I'm trying to tell you that the committee looked at a detailed level at everything we presented at the committee meeting. We did not rush through any of this. We went through all of it, um, very, uh, in depth and they, uh, really got their microscope out and looked at everything for us. So with that 11.5 million dollar increase in revenue, we have corresponding, um, expenditures. We have increases, um, from last year in instruction, from the original budget last year to the proposed budget this year in instruction. And the reason they have the negatives in their increased decrease between estimated and proposed budget in your, um, in your PowerPoint handouts is because estimate, estimated budget was higher than the proposed budget and has to deal with those carryforwards The investments again are being made in instruction primarily and again, investments in our, in our personnel. So for faculty, staff, um, and support staff, we've got pay increases and benefit increases. I did want to point, um, out to you that in your agenda handouts, you also have a listing on pages 12 through 15. At the bottom of each page, you have a listing of the personnel changes. And these personnel changes are between October and July. And so for the main campus, we're increasing positions by 15. The primary driver in that has been discussed before. That's the growth in programs in the College of Nursing in particular. The College of Medicine is growing, uh, their positions by nine, six of those are faculty. Family medicine is just repurposing between, uh, maintenance and support to faculty. And then the College of Pharmacy doesn't have any additional positions or, or repurposed positions presented in this budget. I think that is, pretty much covers the, um, budget presentation. We have gone through a thorough budget hearing process, which starts in October each year to get to this point today. We're recommending low tuition increases. We have stable state appropriation. We're investing in our faculty and staff with our salary increase. We're also investing in them with our, um, uh, tenure promotion pool and our GA, uh, salary increases. And we are continuing to get investments from the state for capital. So we think this is really a, um, positive budget for the university, low tuition fee increases for students and that we're investing the money wisely in our people and in our facilities.
Mr. Chair, as Dr. King mentioned, we've gone through a thorough budget process on campus. We've had the opportunity for, uh, public comment and feedback as we've moved through this. There have been shared governance and that both, uh, members of Faculty Senate, past chair and incoming chair have served on our Budget Advisory Committee. We've had student representation. We've taken the fees to the students. Are there any questions from members of the board about the budget that is being proposed? Or are there any questions from individuals in the room today about the budget that is being proposed?
Um, so on all the slides through there, I noticed that one of the models shows that this year, um, we're.
Cause the speaker identifying himself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's. I'm a, um, I'm a senior here at ETSU. Okay. My name's Austin Abel. I'm a senior here at ETSU. Um, I was served by, uh, SGS Senator last year, um, uh, will be the Secretary of State this year. Anyway, so on the model that showed, it said that the state, um, gave 5.6 million last year and that it changed to 4.7 this year. That was a differential. This is $900,000 differential. And you said that, you, you kept saying that you were grateful that the state was giving you the money they're giving you. Um, the state of Tennessee has $1.4 billion in the rainy day fund. Uh, they just added 225 million to the rainy day fund this year. The, the state funding for our public institution school is 25%. And the students make up 60%, almost, well, 57.46, almost 60% of what we pay to go here or like how this university is ran. Um, so the students are the ones who give us the, or give the most money to this institution, um, to be able to, to run and do things like that. But yet we have no power and, and no say in these decisions being made. Um, all the decisions are made by the state. They're handed down here, they're voted on in the past. Um, so my question, um, is that, hold on, I'm sorry, I typed it out. Uh, okay. So the one, the one criterion, uh, the Board of Trustees must meet before choosing a tuition increase, uh, is listed, um, as efforts to mitigate the financial effect on students. Do you all plan to advocate for the ETSU community at the state level by proposing changes to these state funding models? Or do you anticipate that you're gonna come back in this room every year and raise my tuition like you have the past four years I've been going to school? Because these raises on tuition, if you all read those public comments that are majority negative and majority against this budget is kids saying, I'm not gonna be able, I'm gonna have to work overtime to afford those extra fees. I'm gonna have to not buy as much food. I'm gonna have to go to Bucky's Food Pantry. I'm gonna have to do all these things because you all keep raising tuition and not going to the state and saying, we need more money from y'all. We're a public institution. Everyone, every, we have 1.4 billion dollars in the rainy day budget and it's raining cats and dogs on our adjuncts, on our students and on all the workers in this community. So my question is, are you gonna go to the state and ask for more money and change, change those, but, and ask them to change those budget, budget models and fight for us rather than just passing tuition increases?
Thank you for your question and thank you for your passion. Um, I'll do my best. I'll answer the question on behalf of staff. And Mr. Chair, members of the board, I can think, I think you can see, um, that from our students, you have an informed student body that's here during the summer. Students could be on break and I thank you for being present today to make your voices heard. Uh, we have made our voices heard throughout the year and in the years prior and in the years prior. We were number two in the state in terms of additional investments with respect to outcomes. Uh, the situation that we find ourselves in in Tennessee is very different from that in other states. Uh, the phrase that we used today was grateful and I think in many respects we should be because our circumstance budgetarily is different than that in the states that surround us. Very few states that surround us, Kentucky, for example, Illinois, for example, West Virginia, for example, are not seeing investments in capital. They're not seeing investments in salary. They're not seeing investments in operating. In fact, they're seeing continued disinvestment. This is the seventh year out of eight in which we've had salary enhancements for our faculty and staff. Those enhancements have been provided by the state. So is it the budget that, um, is perfect? I don't think any budget is perfect, but this is a budget that is very different than what you see in many other states that surround us. Uh, the disinvestment in post-secondary education that has occurred nationally is a national phenomenon. It's not just a state phenomena. 25 years ago, 70 cents on the dollar of what it took to run post-secondary education was paid for by states. Now that number's about 30% by states. So the transfer that you've seen in the state of Tennessee is a national conversation. It's not just a state conversation. But to the question about advocacy, we've been very intentional in our efforts to make the case for post-secondary education and we will do so again vigorously next year. This board has vigorously advocated for our students, for our staff. I just wanna draw a long-winded answer to your question, but I feel the passion of your question deserves an appropriate response. If you look at the revenue generated from the fee increase, two thirds of all of that is being invested in our people. Um, so from an efficiencies perspective, um, we're doing all that we can to hold down cost, but the state funds half of the salary enhancement. So if the state provides a 2% salary enhancement, the other half of that comes from the institution. It is not funded fully by the state. So the bulk of the fee increases are being invested in our faculty and our staff. The other portion of that is for scholarships.
Except adjuncts, you're right. Adjuncts are included on the flat rate.
But as mentioned earlier, we have provided latitude to the colleges through things that will occur at the college level for colleges to set market appropriate, discipline-specific enhancements. You will see increases in adjunct salaries in many disciplines across the campus this fall. You will see enhancements in adjunct salaries in many disciplines across the campus, but there will not be in across the board. It will be discipline-specific and college-specific. Any questions from members of the board? Mr. Chair, we have.
No.
Sent it to material before you and would, um, suggest moving forward with a vote as appropriate.
All right. Dr. Lindvile, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Dr. Alsop? Yes. Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Dr. Latimer?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yes.
Mr. Nyswonger?
Yes.
Any trustee that I missed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Chair, the, the last agenda item I will cover, um, and it is the item found regarding, uh, capital outlay and project approval. Uh, these materials are found on page 16, 15, 16, 17 in the board packet. Uh, we are required by, uh, THEC policy and by policy of our Board of Trustees to take action on a proposed capital projects list, which your staff will then present to the Tennessee Higher Education Commission for their consideration for funding and then for consideration to recommend to the General Assembly and to Governor Lee. As was mentioned in, uh, prior portion of this meeting, we did not receive support for the humanities building this past session. However, they did fund three projects above us, which means our project, with all things old, should move to number two on the capital list. So we are recommending to our board, uh, that, that project continue forward. That would be a $71.8 million building to fund a new humanities building as well as backfill spaces in Burleson and in Roger Stout. Your capital maintenance projects are upgrades for electrical service to the main campus, HVAC repairs, window and envelope repairs, as well as roof replacements and drainage corrections. There is a possibility that, um, as we continue our, uh, inspection of the capital, uh, condition of campus over the course of the summer, that we may make a technical correction or two to this list as it moves through THEC in the event that we were to add, uh, a roof or drainage correction that's not listed. We'll bring that back to the board at your September meeting. Uh, so we're seeking some administrative latitude to staff as projects move through the, the review process here in the next month or two to adjust the list. But these would be the proposed capital outlay and capital maintenance projects that we request your support for, for submission to THEC and then for ultimate submission to the General Assembly and the governor in the next budget cycle. We'd be happy to address any questions.
Well, if there are no questions, uh, Dr. Lindvile, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Dr. Alsop?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Dr. Latimer?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yes.
Mr. Nyswonger?
Yes.
Anybody I missed? Thank you. Passes.
Okay. Our last item of business today is, uh, was under other business. Dr. Nolan, would you just give us a general update, please? Uh, anything that you might not have covered?
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to just provide a quick update on, uh, activities that are occurring across campus this summer. It has been a couple of months since we were together in April. Um, for those who have not had the chance to be on campus, uh, update on two major construction projects, Culp as well as Martin. Uh, the Culp Center is moving forward. It remains on time and on budget. Uh, we should be in a position for the third floor of the Culp to be ready for the return of our students in August, uh, thereby affording, uh, the full, uh, range of services that are available on that floor for the start of the semester, which is important because right now that entire floor is closed and we are feeding individuals at the Millennium Center. So our ability to accommodate the return of our student body in the fall is predicated on the completion of that project on the third floor. Uh, we maintain, uh, our timeframes with an anticipated opening for the full building in its entirety, uh, in January of 2020. Uh, with respect to the Martin Center, that project is also moving along. Um, we anticipate that building opening in the spring of 2020, which seems a long way away, but we're gonna blink in the spring of 2020 is upon us. There's a lot of work that's occurring over the course of the summer as it relates to our enrollment and retention efforts. Uh, as Dr. King mentioned, uh, we're building the budget conservatively by design. Uh, we anticipate that enrollment will be relatively flat and Dr. Sherrill and his team are taking aggressive steps, uh, with respect to the recruitment of incoming freshmen as well as efforts focused on retention and persistence for our returning students. We anticipate sharing strong news with the board in September and not only about enrollment but student success. Early numbers indicate that graduation rates that we'll present to the board in September will be the highest graduation rates in the history of the institution and we look forward to sharing that news with you in September. Um, there's also work that's occurring over the course of the summer, uh, related to the ongoing efforts at reorganization and restructure being led by Dr. Bishop. Uh, we are examining scholarships. We're examining the structure of advising across campus. We have an active committee that's examining research and innovation and we'll give a full update to the board at the September board meeting on the progress in each of those respective areas. Um, a reminder that fall is coming quickly was provided to me, uh, by the Dean of the College of Medicine about a half hour ago. Uh, the new residents at Quillen arrive next week and we will welcome the incoming class of first-year students at Quillen in the middle of July. So while we think that fall is still many months away, um, on Friday and Saturday, when it was in the 50s outside, it felt like fall already. And I think that was an early glimpse of the fact that we will blink and fall will be here. But our construction is moving along, deferred maintenance projects are moving along. Um, the review of structure and organization across campus is moving as we would anticipate. We look forward to providing full updates to the board at the September meeting. Um, also remind the trustees, uh, of a couple of calendar events that will occur, uh, and we'll provide information on some THEC-related, uh, board training and professional development that will occur on the University of Memphis campus later this summer. Uh, last but not least, I had the opportunity today to, uh, say thank you to a member of the ETSU community who is retiring and moving into a new role and to welcome the individual who is passing the baton and will now begin to run. Uh, would like to thank, uh, Fred Warren, the longstanding golf coach of East Tennessee State University for his service to the university. He is only our second golf coach and Coach Amos, who we named today, is our third. Uh, Coach Warren, uh, led us to number one rankings, uh, but most importantly, the academic performance of his student athletes was beyond description. Uh, there are a number of individuals who will retire from the university, um, and that's a point of significant loss. Uh, we will see a retirement next week in this room. Uh, I do know more if she is here, uh, but I want to take a moment of personal privilege to thank Dr. Jane Jones, the longtime chief of staff of the university, uh, whose retirement event will be next Wednesday. Um, Dr. Jones has been an outstanding leader at this institution. Um, she has kept me on pace and on target. I've not always been on time for meetings, but she has tried. Uh, and I want to thank Dr. Jones as well as, uh, countless others who are transitioning into the next phase of their careers and we look forward to welcoming our new faculty and staff.
Thank you, President Nolan. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, BJ, thank you for your work, a very complicated process. And at this time, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to that? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.